Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. On February 10th, 2020, it is 8:00 PM. My name is Chris Pia. The chairman of Stratford Town Council. And we'll commence the meeting. The first item on the agenda is the call to order. The second is going to be the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Counselor O'Brien, please.
Heavily file, grant us your guidance as we are gathered here this evening in carrying out our duties to our townspeople and helping to make our town a better place in which to live. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we're going to get going. We have some awards tonight and some ceremonial presentations. Before we move to the approval of the minutes, I'd like to just take a moment. As the new incoming chair of this new town council, I think it's a good tradition that councils have been doing for years past is to acknowledge and thank the prior council chair. So with that, I'd like to thank counselor Jim Connor as the council chair of 2017-2019 for your dedication leading the town forward. And we have a little gift to thank you, sir. So thank you very much.
(applause). It's a gavel.[134.96][134.96](laughter). Very appropriate. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jim. First item on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion for approval of minutes. Moved by Mr. Harden, Council Harden. Seconded by Ms. Dancho. Any discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Second item on the agenda, ceremonial presentations and awards. Item 2.1, I'd like to start off with the continuing to commemorating the 19th Amendment. This evening will be for Alice Johnson. And tonight will be presented by Risa McLaughlin, Benell High School class of 2020. So Risa, if you'd like to come up. And thank you very much for everything.
Hello, I'm Risa McLaughlin. I'm a senior at Benell High School. And I'd first like to thank the council for allowing me this opportunity. So tonight I'll be speaking about Alice Caroline Judson. Mark Twain remarked, "In 1909, I came in with Haley's Comet in 1835. It is coming again next year, and I expect to go out with it. It will be the greatest disappointment of my life if I don't go out with Haley's Comet." The Almighty has said, "No doubt." Now here are these two unaccountable freaks. They came in together, they must go out together. Alice Caroline Judson was born a few short months before presidential candidate Abraham Lincoln visited the town of Stratford in 1860. It's doubtful that Alice could have foreseen that her passing would be followed by a visit to the town of Stratford in 1936 by presidential candidate Franklin Roosevelt. These two men represented the book and ideals Alice Judson strove for her entire life. Lincoln represented the ideal of equality for all Americans. Roosevelt represented the idea of helping those in dire need become self-sufficient. Alice embodied both these ideals. If you were to Google Alice Caroline Judson, your search would produce no results, and yet her life had a disproportionately large impact on her beloved town of Stratford. No books have been written about Alice. As a matter of fact, we can only locate one book that contains any information pertaining to Alice's extraordinary life. This is an excerpt from "The History of Bridgeport and Vicinity, Vol. 2," by George Curtis Waldo, Jr., in 1917. Alice Caroline, born September 27th, 1859, in Stratford, was educated in public and private schools in the Sedwig Academy. She gave much of her time and attention to the care of her father, and she has always taken a deep interest in church and Sunday school work. She is an ardent advocate of the cause of women's suffrage and was among the first to organize a women's suffrage movement in Stratford, an association in which she has filled the office of vice president and treasurer and is now president. She has also served as a delegate to the county and state conventions and was foremost in the movement toward having the state legislature pass a bill to give women the right to vote for president, and also in municipal affairs and on the temperance question. She is a woman of broad intellect and takes an active part in all movements that have for their object the benefit of the poor and oppressed. In 1910, she took a trip around the world in the ship Cleveland, visiting all places of interest in different countries, including Japan, where she visited her sister, who was a teacher in that country. Ms. Judson resides at the Dunbar Homestead on East Broadway, where many attractive improvements have been made. Alice's young life was marked by searing tragedy and loss. Alice's mother passed away when Alice was six years old. Her father's grocery store in Paradise Green burned down two years later. Alice's father turned to Alice to fill the gaping domestic hole left by Alice's mother's passing. Alice assumed a maternal, caring role for her family and for her town. Alice's younger sister Elizabeth took ill and passed away at the age of 23. Alice was Elizabeth's primary caregiver. Alice's father became ill in his later years, and Alice cared for him until his death in 1905. Alice's sister Maria was a teacher and principal of the primary grades at Center School. A couple of years before Maria passed away in 1911, Maria contracted a debilitating illness requiring Alice to care for her until Maria's passing in 1911. Alice's only brother, Styles Jr., one of the most influential men in Connecticut at that time, died young at age 51 in 1914. Alice took on the role of executorship of Styles' estate and was largely responsible for the placing of the Styles-Judson monument on West Broad Street Green across from the Perry House. If it sounds as though Alice's life was bounded by family tragedy and loss, she did not let any of that show slow her down. In 1889, Alice took an active role in the celebration of the town's 250th anniversary. At that time, when few women would have been traveling the country and the world, Alice was one of the first Stratfordites to visit the Chicago World Fair in 1893. In 1910, Alice set out to visit her missionary sister Cornelia, who was serving in Japan. Alice traveled through Europe, Egypt, China, and India before meeting up with Cornelia in Japan. If Alice traveled with a companion, that person has not been identified. When Alice returned from her world travels, she spent 1911 giving stereoticon presentations of her journey to audiences in Stratford and Bridgeport. In 1912, Alice became the first vice president of the resurgent suffrage movement in Stratford. Alice insisted, when the Stratford Suffrage Association began, that it not affiliate with the State Suffrage Association. Alice found that the state organization a bit too conservative and dispassionate for her tastes. This placed Alice in a bit of conflict with Catherine Hepburn's mother, Catherine Houghton Hepburn, who was an executive officer, later president, of the Connecticut Suffrage Association at that time. Alice and Mrs. Hepburn reconciled their differences, and in 1916, Alice invited Mrs. Hepburn to be featured speaker at the organizing convention of the Fairfield County Suffrage Association, which held its inaugural meeting in Stratford. Alice represented the anti-thesis of all the negative traits of the anti-suffrage supporters attributed to women active in the suffrage movement. Alice dressed like a lady, attended to her family and her community, and ran for town offices when those opportunities presented themselves after women gained the local town vote in Connecticut in 1893. Alice was an officer or a board member of the following town and community organizations: 250th Town Anniversary Celebration Committee, 250th Anniversary Celebration of the Congregational Church Christian Endeavor Society, Delegate to State Suffrage Convention in 1914, Delphian Society, Delegate to the Fairfield County Suffrage Association, Foreign Missionary Society of the Methodist Church, Home Economic Committee, Ladies Aid Society, Library Board, Missionary Institute and League, Community House, Parent Teachers Association, School Committee, Republican Women's Association, Stratford Cannon Kitchen, Stratford League of Women Voters, Stratford War Food Exhibit, Weekly Prayer Meetings, Women's Service League of the Congregational Church, and Young People's Society of Christian Endeavor. Just a few months before her passing, Alice resigned as president of the Judson Family Association, the last documented position Alice held in her community. If Stratford was ever home to a more influential leader, it would be difficult to say who that leader was. Sadly, Alice's life and legacy have been lost over the past 84 years. We hope this brief recounting of a small portion of Alice's life has served to open a forgotten chapter of an uncommon Stratford leader. Thank you.[597.54][597.54](applause).
Thank you very much, Risa. That was wonderful. We appreciate it. Items 2.2 on the agenda. Next is recognition of Molly Carey, a fifth grade student at St. Mark's School and one of Fairfield County's winners in this year's Connecticut Fire Prevention Poster Contest. To congratulate Molly and present her with her award tonight, I'd like to call up Assistant Fire Marshal Roy Minton.
Good evening, everybody. We just wanted to recognize Molly quickly. The Connecticut Fire Prevention Poster Contest is run every year by the Fair Plan. The Fair Plan is an insurance consortium that provides insurance to those property owners that can't get insurance any other way, their high-risk properties. So that's one of the programs that they do is a poster contest, and they end up producing a calendar. And so Molly's poster will be in next year's calendar. I submit some of these calendars up for the town council so that they can enjoy those later on. But for Molly, we've got a copy of her poster to present to her tonight. So this is her poster. The poster's already been submitted to the mayor of the town council and to the town to see. And we have a press release, we have a copy of it electronically that's available as well. So Molly, we really want to congratulate you. Here's the copy of the poster. We'll put that to the side for just a moment. We also have a certificate for you. Perfect.[754.12][754.12](laughter). So here's the certificate for you and a copy of the calendar, this year's calendar. It doesn't have your poster in it. And from the Stratford Fire Department and the town, here's a gift card for $75 for your accomplishment as a local winner. Congratulations.[775.00][775.00](applause). Absolutely. Where's Dad? Dad wants to get a picture of her, but then we should get Dad in there. Mrs. Melissa Warner, the principal at St. Mark's, is here today. I want to submit, I want to give her a copy of the certificate as well. With a, bear with me a moment. This is for the, this one is for the art teacher. Oh, you're here?
Yeah.[830.52][830.52](laughter).
This is, this is the art teacher. I'm sorry, she snuck in on me. This is Miss Priscilla Mahar. So she came in for you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So why don't you come into the middle? Congratulations again. (applause). Why don't you get in the book? Do you want to get in the book?
Do you want to get in the book?
One more round of applause for Molly. Thank you.[883.36][883.36](applause).
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roy. Thank you very much. I'm going to read that. Okay. Next item on the agenda, 2.3, recognition. Assistant Municipal Animal Control Officer Angelique Fitzmorris. She is the winner of CMA COAs Paul Delineant-Teresa Foss Memorial Connecticut Animal Control Officer of the Year Award. That was a mouthful. Congratulations. Come on up.[919.72][919.72](applause). Thank you very much. Congratulations, Angelique.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. And last but not least, the last item on the agenda, 2.4, we're going to be recognizing Walter Guy Stelmec, who is a long-serving member of the Parks and Rec Committee in Stratford. Guy has been dedicating many years to his community and given countless of volunteer hours, and it's people like this that make a community move forward and work well. So we'd like to recognize Guy by Counselor O'Brien and Mayor Hoytick.[1022.36][1022.36](applause).
Walter, better known as Guy Stelmec, has served on the Parks and Rec Committee with the need for over 15 years. He also is a volunteer with Tony Baseball for over 17 years. And he's just an example of the volunteers that help Stratford get better and better. And I think his passion for this kind of, Dad is recognizing people for this kind of volunteerism. I'm going to do this great mayor, I'm going to recognize more and more people. So, certificate of appreciation, here, by presenting to Walter Guy Stelmec, in grateful recognition of his many years of dedicated volunteer service as a member of the town of Stratford's Parks and Recreation Committee. Signed by the mayor, Councilor Chairman Pia, and myself.[1079.04][1079.04](applause). Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations, Guy. Thank you very much for your service. Okay. Next item on the agenda, item 3.1, communications bills petitions. We're going to have the United States Census briefing from Claudio, Claudia Mero, excuse me, sir. Claudia Mero Falcone, partnership specialist for the New York Regional Census Center and Field Division for the U.S. Census Bureau. Sir, if you can come up to the mic.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank you for being here tonight, and Mayor Lauda, Chief Staff Mike, and all members of the city council. Tonight, I'm going to speak very briefly about the Census 2020. Everybody knows about the Census, but this 2020 Census has a special point that I would like to remark tonight. First, the goal of the Census is to count everybody regardless their immigration status. The goal is to count every human being living in the United States as of April 1st. The Census is so important because it determines the federal funds that every state receives. The federal government will allocate $175 billion that will be distributed among the states depending on Census information. That's why it's so important to have an accurate count. Also, remember that Connecticut in some point has six reps in Washington? Well, we have now five. We lost one rep in one congressman in Washington because of the Census results in 2000. In this 2020, we want to recover that seat. And the only way to recover that seat is making this 2020 Census the best ever, counting everybody in Connecticut, including Stratford. Of course, the other aspect I would like to reinforce here is that the Census is safe to respond. Many people that did not respond Census in 2010 and previous Census didn't respond because fear, because they thought that the information would be used against them somehow. Mostly immigrants, mostly people with no legal status in this country. Now, the truth is that the Census information is protected by a law. Title 13 of the U.S. Code protects the information, and this information won't be shared with any agency, local, state, or federal. The information collected by the Census is just to produce statistics. It's the only purpose. No agency will be able to use information from the Census for benefit or for hurting anyone. Another aspect important to recall is that for the first time, the Census will be responded online. Remember years ago that it was just a paper questionnaire? Well, technology is now in the 21st century, and people will be able to respond to Census from a laptop, from a desktop, from an iPad, from a cellphone. Any internet connection will be able to, you will be able to respond to Census in any of those devices. Also, you will be able to respond to Census by phone. Calling a 1-800 number, you'll just respond to Census. So if you don't want a census taker to knock your door, just respond to Census before April 30. My first census taker will be on the street knocking doors. You will receive, after January 12th, invitation letters will be sent to most of the houses with a code for you to enter either online or call a 1-800 number. Census will be able to be answering 12 languages besides English. And it's really, really important that everybody here in the council, everybody here in Stratford, deliver this message to all your friends, neighbors, relatives, that responding to Census is really important. So we want the federal funds in Connecticut. Many programs depend on those funds. Hospitals, health centers, roads, schools, different programs. Also, an aspect I would like to reaffirm today is that the Census has a lot of employment opportunities. We are encouraging people to apply as census takers or field super advisors. It's $25 an hour, training is paid, and the work will be from May 1st through July 31st. So four months, this job is very ideal for anyone, any school, school kids in vacation, people working part-time, people in need of work, people in transition to another job. So it's a great opportunity to do something great and being paid. Because working for the Census is really cool, should I say. I feel really great working for the Census, contributing to this operation, which is one of the largest operations of the United States in peaceful time. Again, it's really important that we respond to Census on time and that we share the information about employment opportunity with people not only in Connecticut. If you have relatives in other states, please give them a call. It's just an online application at 2020census.gov/jobs. Very easy to apply. 18 years old and older. It has to be U.S. citizen or permanent resident with legal permit to work, flexible hours, part-time, full-time. And it's a great opportunity to make some extra money in this spring/summertime. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. And the Census happens every 10 years. We're talking about the decennial Census that happens every 10 years. So if we don't make it right this time, we will lose funds. Connecticut has a 26%, no, a 74% response rate. It means that 26% of the population in Connecticut did not respond to Census in 2010. That translated in money is billions of dollars that did not come to Connecticut because of that and losing a seat in Washington. We don't want that to happen again. That's why we need you to respond to Census on time and encourage other people to respond to Census. Thank you very much.[1594.12][1594.12](applause).
Thank you very much, Claudia Mero. Appreciate it. Item number four, mayor's report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. Earlier, well, in January and February, we lost two very dedicated Stratford servants, Ray O'Connell and Neil Sherman. And I wanted to talk to them, a little bit about them today. Ray was a longtime Stratford school administrator and was superintendent of schools. He was iconic and an inspirational figure to many who champion the underdog. His service as a teacher, principal, and superintendent left a positive mark on a lot of lives who came in contact with him, and many children carried his life lessons well with them into adulthood. I was privileged to serve on the Board of Education when he was superintendent, and I know firsthand that he earned the Superman moniker that he soon became associated with. Neil Sherman was also a dedicated professional who believed in Stratford and gave tremendously of himself over many years to improve our town. As the organizer of the Stratford Chamber of Commerce, who then became its executive director, Neil was focused on marketing the town to improve the economics of Stratford. Whether it was his work on the Town's Economic Development Commission or as the organizer of the popular downtown market in Stratford, Neil was always in the forefront of important and meaningful efforts to promote bringing our community together. We have truly lost two good friends. And Claudia Mero didn't pay me for putting this in my report. However, as a recruiting, we are going to have a recruitment drive at the Stratford Library in conjunction with the U.S. Census and our newly formed Stratford Complete Count Committee on January 25th. The Census has numerous paid positions, available with flexible hours that earn between $23.50 to $25 an hour. It's not too late to apply, and interested individuals can find out more by visiting You're welcome, Claudia Mero.
And you work for the Dallas and Stratford, I'm moving from Lea to Stratford.
Well, we welcome you. Now we're up to 51,256. Some updates for you. We have renovations going on at the Baldwin Center. Work on the critical upgrades and the improvements to the Baldwin Center continue this month. The roofing of the center has been completed, and the full modernization of the elevator system is scheduled to be completed in early March. New flooring has been installed in the cafe and clinic. Flooring in the remaining areas will be completed in March as well, and once the flooring is complete, the interior will be painted. Circle Drive, we had a temporary bridge installed to replace bridge number 07016 that was cited for maintenance issues with DOT. Never in my years did I think that I would be involved in the replacement of a road bridge, but you never know what's going to come your way, I guess, as being mayor. Franklin School, due to a major unreparable boiler leak, the boiler, plumbing leak, the boiler was repaired. DeLuca Field, the work is commenced on the backstop replacement. The project will be substantially completed by March 31st. And the Huntington Road Fire And the Huntington Road Firehouse is, project is continuing. The roof and windows had already been replaced, and the second phase of the project will remediate the asbestos, remodel the bathrooms to accommodate cohabitation, upgrade the kitchen and living areas. The project is to be, expected to be completed within eight weeks. Some upcoming events. Amazon's informational session, we are looking forward to having Amazon facility open in Stratford. They will be holding an informational session for entrepreneurs interested in starting their own package delivery business as part of the Amazon Delivery Service Partner Program. The session will be held this Wednesday, February 12, at 6:30 p.m. at Riverview Bistro, which is located at 946 Ferry Boulevard. The Stratford VFW is cosponsoring a blood drive with the American Red Cross on March 4th from 1:00 in the afternoon till 6:00 p.m. at their hall at 100 Veterans Boulevard in Stratford. Please consider donating blood. The Stratford Hispanic Heritage Committee will be holding their Red Gala Scholarship this Saturday, February 15, from 6:30 to 10:30 p.m. at Orinok Country Club. The tickets are $50 a person, and the gala proceeds go to helping deserving students with their scholarships. As you may have noted, that Aquarion Water Company is currently performing work on Main Street replacement of the Roosevelt and Wellington Street pipes. It's anticipated the work will last for four to six weeks, weather permitting. During that time, customers may experience temporary service disruption or discolored water. Aquarion has been in touch with impacted customers, and my office has been in touch with them as well, as well as with Councilor Taveras of the 3rd District where the work is being conducted. We will be receiving weekly reports from Aquarion and monitoring the work throughout the duration. This is the first and the largest of a handful of necessary water main replacements that will be conducted in Stratford in 2020. Town Hall Holiday Hour should be noted that we will be closed on Wednesday, the 12th in observance of Lincoln's birthday, and on Monday, the 17th, in observance of President's Day. The sanitation division of Public Works will be working both days, but the transfer station will be closed. Appointments. In the back of the room is our new fire chief, Brian Lampart. So Brian was appointed chief at the end of the last month, and he brings 32 years of firefighting experience, all served here in Stratford. He previously worked on the line as fire marshal and as deputy chief. I'm looking forward to continuing working with Brian in his new role, and I know he will do great things for the town and the department. I've appointed Ron Ticky to the Historic District Commission. Ron replaces Dave Fuller, who has resigned on February 5. Anthony Smith has also been reappointed to the commission as his appointment has expired. There are two openings on the Conservation Commission that I would like to fill with Greg Gross, replacing J.E. Martin, and Cassandra Bryant, replacing Richard Hayden. I've asked Jim Benson to serve as chair and Frank Bavacqua to serve as vice chair of the Economic and Community Development Commission. I'm also appointing Jennifer Sheldon to serve in the position vacated by Gary Pia. The Community Development Subcommittee members shall be as follows. Jason Santi Chair, David Harden, Casimir Mazera, Greg Kahn, and Paul Taveras. I've appointed the following individuals to serve on Stratford's Complete Count Committee for the U.S. Census, see Claudia Mero. Chief of Staff Michael Downwell Chair, Counselor David Harden, Counselor Bill O'Brien, Reverend Simeon Law, United Methodist Church, Deacon Paul Kermey, St. Mark's Church, Sheila Nevis from Ashcroft, Tom Quinn from Nuwabu Pasta, Ty Sims, Southend Community Center, Sandy Arbor, Senior Services, Shirley Dominguez, Senior Services, Arlec Johnson, Assistant Principal at Franklin School, Lori de Blasio, Assistant Principal at Nicholas School, and Sherry Sabansky, Stratford Library. I wish all of your families a Happy Valentine's Day this Friday and enjoy the President's Day holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Questions for the mayor? Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. Mayor Hoydic, just a few words, if you would, on economic development, projects that are in the works that may impact us over the next 12 months.
Get comfortable. So, Councilman Khan, as you know, there are several infrastructure improvement projects that will have significant economic improvement opportunities for Stratford. The first one that should be finished in June is the Route 110 roadwork by Sikorsky Aircraft. The second is the Exit 33 interchange that will have start, the contract was awarded and will start work in the fall. Exit 32, which is the southbound exit on Linden Street, should be completed this fall as well. And, I'm missing one. Stratford Avenue and Honeyspot is still in redevelopment, and then the Raymark Waste EPA Project, where the remediation will be completed on contract plating, so the hall road can be created, so the waste that is going to be consolidated in Stratford can be put on the old ball field. Currently at that project, the town is putting in, well, actually, it's not the town, but the EPA is putting in a barrier wall to protect the residents at Cottage Place and Patterson Amazon is expanding its footprint and coming to Stratford. As you know, it's 200,000 square feet on Long Beach Boulevard. They expect to employ anywhere from 200 people to 1,000 people. If you're more interested in finding out about those opportunities, please come to Riverview Restaurant on Wednesday for their job employment opportunity session. Anything else, Counselor?
Thank you for the overview.
Well, if you, next time, if you'd like it more in-depth, I'd be happy to get you one from the Economic Development Director.
Any other questions for the mayor?
Mr. Chairman, questions for the mayor? Can you please? Can you please give us some updates? I see that some construction is going on with Juliette Low, so could you please address all of us about how that progress is going and when you expect it to be completed?
Certainly. As you know from the Planning Commission that approved and referenced the plan to, or referred the plan to the council for the Juliette Low Pavilion, that work is being done. The architect of record is here, Brian Schneider. Would you like to come and give a little bit of an update on that project? Thank you, Brian.
Is this one live? Okay. THP Construction was low bid contractor on that project, and they broke ground, I'd say, a week, week or so ago. They started excavation for the slab, excavation for the footings, and, you know, they're, it should be getting busier there in the coming week or two. Should go up quick. But I think the plan is, depending on the weather, is to pour the slab in the spring, but they anticipate getting the posts, framing the roof, and then pouring the slab and doing the finish work in the spring. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, my pleasure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for the mayor?
One more.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Khan, I neglected to include in my commentary that Sikorsky Aircraft is building the King Stallion, the CH-53. That aircraft will be extremely large, it's a heavy lift helicopter. They will be expanding their workforce with thousands of people, and that, we can anticipate hearing that lift travel overhead and as they do their flight patterns to test. So I'm sure I can give you some more updates on that, and that should be a positive experience economically and for job growth in Stratford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Seeing no other further questions? All right, next item on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion for, under committee reports, for 4.3.1.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 4.3.1A and B.
Motion's on the table. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Harden. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. So question on item B, that it's a signal design, traffic signal design, is that being done in conjunction with planning and zoning in terms of long-term development?
Yes, this is the roundabout there in the state, as they often do, have asked us to do a few more technical drawings and stuff, and that was what this is for, and it says not to exceed because Mr. Casey was pretty confident it wasn't going to go over this number.
Thank you, Mr. Poizan.
Any other discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'll call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 10-0. Item 4.3.2. Mr. Perillo.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution for 4.3.2.
Motion's on the table. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Harden. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Khan.
Chris, just for the record, that's for, the mayor mentioned that we've done improvements to the Huntington Fire Station, and this is just another set of improvements in addition to, she referred to earlier.
Yes. Yes, these, that is correct, Mr. Khan. Any other discussion on this item? Nope, hearing none, I'll call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 10-0. Item 4.3.3.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve 4.3.3A, B, and C.
Motion's on the table. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Harden. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none?
Chairman.
Mr. Khan.
Just a question to verify that these costs are all within what I'll call the anticipated expenses of the project and not requiring contingency expenditures.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion on this? With that, call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 10-0. Item 4.3.4.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move that the following be added to the agenda as item 4-4.3.4. Resolve that the following fees for use of Short Beach and Long Beach, as previously recommended and approved by the Short Beach Park Commission, and is sent to the council with a favorable recommendation from the Parks and Rec Committee, be approved, and everyone should have received the copy of the fees.
Okay, so you're right, your motion, Mr. O'Brien, is to put this, is to amend the agenda to add this item to the agenda. Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Poizan. Any discussion on adding it to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 10-0. Mr. O'Brien.
And then I make the motion that this be approved as previously stated.
Okay, motions on the table, seconded by Dave Harden. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Khan.
This is a discussion on the fees themselves. Bill, the entrance fees for residents, what are they today? And can a resident who doesn't have a parking sticker on their windshield, can they show a driver's license and get in?
It's my understanding that no, they cannot. I think they have to go to the rec department and show the license there and get the sticker.
And so the entrance fee for residents, for example, it's going to be $20 Monday through Thursday, is it, the current fee might be?
So.
The current fee for weekdays is 20. We're not raising that fee.
So just for, let me, point of clarity, because I did work on this for the last, with Short Beach Commission, and then they worked on it. The point of clarity is, this is for non-resident daily rates, not for town residents. Let's make that clear, I'm sorry. Okay? And it is, it is in stated, this, thank you for, this is to amend, the current non-daily parking rate for, for non-residents is $20 currently, right now, in the town of Stratford. Okay? The motion is to amend that to $40 for weekends and holidays. Weekends would be considered Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays. A lot of work, and I can speak on this, a lot of work has been done. We referenced all of our surrounding communities, we called their rec centers, I personally called, Amy Nor called, Karen Daden, Chairperson of Short Beach, and verified all these rates. We're, we're just basically bringing us in line with surrounding communities for non-resident daily parking. Mr. O'Brien.
I want to mention, too, that it's not on this sheet you receive, but it's Friday to Sunday and holidays, those increases. Also, I want to mention that some towns actually charge residents for their beach permits, and we do not.
So any other discussion on, on the item, now that we've clarified that? Okay? All right, so we'll be calling to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 10-0. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda will be 4.3.5.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I move that we approve the ordinance amending section 5-61 through section 5-67 of the town code regarding the Stratford Housing Partnership, and that the second reading of the ordinance be dispensed with as copies have been received by all council members, and that the same be adopted as a second reading, and the foregoing be and is hereby approved 30 days from passage.
Motion by Ms. Dancho, seconded by Counselor O'Brien. Any discussion on this? Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. First of all, I want to really commend Mayor Hoydic on reactivating the housing partnership, and for Attorney Florak for providing the expert framework around it. Affordable housing has been a real issue, well, for every community, and this should help us, you know, gather together interested experts within the town to solve it. The, when we had our early ordinance meeting, a few amendments were presented. I wanted to just, if I can, state three concerns. One is, there's a concern that we will not get a quorum for a meeting if there's more than nine individuals. To get to nine from the current 13 members, we are eliminating three community representatives, a member of the business, two members of the community. We have a, I have a concern that, you know, certain constituents may not be represented once we reduce the number of participants, but we have assurances from the administration that, like with all of our committees, it's public, people can contribute, and therefore I just encourage all the residents to encourage this commission, this partnership, if you will, to do things expeditiously, which is the second concern. It mentions periodic reports to the town. We would prefer that there was more predictable reports on a timeline, but we'll have good faith that the commission does its job as the town needs it to do the job. That's it.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Chair. As it with all of our public commissions, boards, committees, there are minutes taken, there's a recording secretary, and those minutes are available online and in your ponies every week. So you will have, be kept abreast of everything that we're doing if you are unable to attend those meetings. Thank you, Chair.
Any other discussion on this item? If not, we'll call to a vote, which, this will be an ordinance, so we will be doing a roll call vote, and I will, with that, I will ask the council chair, excuse me, the council clerk to initiate a roll call vote for this.
Ms. Shake.
I vote no.
Mr. Taveras?
No.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Is there a Mr. Khan in the room?
Mr. Khan?
No.
Mr. Poizan?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dancho?
Yes.
Council Chair Pia?
Council Chair votes yes.
7-3.
Motion passes 7-3. Next item on the agenda will be the town attorney's report.
Thank you. I'd ask that we go into executive session to discuss pending legal matters.
Okay.
Invite town attorneys Hodgson, Florak, and Leclerc, and Mr. Timniak and Mr. Downs.
Okay, so we have a request to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to move to executive session.
Motion by Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Harden. Do I have any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 10-0. Executive session.
Yeah, we're also going to have.
I sent you the fire stuff today. Yeah. So many different ones I, so there's four vacancies, there's a vacancy for fire marshal, there's a deputy chief vacancy, and there's two in fire, the regular fire marshal position, so there's four. And I broke them out, and I put vacancy on the line. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you scroll, which is like twelve through fourteen? No, back to bond, that would be wrong. And that's the, back to bond refunding. Yeah, there you go. So that's what, on the south. Okay. You should see the whole text.
Ron, don't you miss us?
Ron. I'm putting you in the executive session.
So, right. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive, if everyone, yep, can we get the counselors? Thank you. So we can move the meeting along. I'll, so I need a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make that motion to come out.
Councilwoman Dancho, thank you. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on that? No, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero, we have everybody. And then I need, per Towne, Town Attorney Hodgson. I can note that on the record, as the Chair, okay. The Chair will note on the record that no action was taken in executive session on the item. Okay, thank you. And then we'll entertain a motion for the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, on four point four point two, I move that we move into executive session including all town counselors and the attorneys present. And Ron Ng.
Okay, motion's on the table to go back into executive session for one more item?
And Chris Timniak. And Mr. Downs.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion, please? Seconded by David Harden, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Chair votes aye. Go back in. To discuss collective bargaining.
We have a memo from, uh, the Register of Voters' office describing a date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, which is a Tuesday. And.
So, do you want to make a motion to amend, put it on the agenda first?
Thank you, sir. Motion to amend the agenda.
To add the item.
To add the item of special election ZBA.
Second. Seconded by Mister Connor. Any discussion on amending to put on the agenda that we could discuss? No. Hearing none. I'll call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Ten zero. Item's now on the agenda. Mister Khan.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, in accordance with the memo that was authored by, I believe, the Register of Voters, uh, special election would be scheduled for Tuesday, June thirtieth. And I seek the council's approval for that special election.
So if I can call up the registrar.
Second, first.
Seconded by Mister Connor. That was a motion. Thank you, sir. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none. I'll, I would like to have the registrars, if they can come forward, as this is a new item, and give us some clarity on this from your office. If you both want to take a, a mic.
Good evening. And thank you for the opportunity. Uh, as noted in the menu and as, 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 uh, Councilman Khan has, uh, mentioned, uh, our suggestion for the special election for the vacated seat for Zoning Board of Appeals is Tuesday, uh, June thirtieth. Uh, the reasoning for that, and it is your obligation as counsel under our charter four point three point four, to set that date. Uh, some of the reasons why we chose tho, that date, uh, as June thirtieth, it is the last Tuesday before the hundred and fifty day timeline expires. Uh, once you actually approve that date, then the Secretary of State, uh, will actually set a, an election calendar, which, uh, with the June thirtieth date, will give, uh, the parties time to endorse, uh, will give proper time should anybody decide to primary those endorsements, and will also provide, uh, time for campaigning for that seat. In addition to the June thirtieth, that will ensure that, uh, schools will be closed on that day, which also will, uh, eliminate the need for, uh, additional police security that we have to provide whenever we have, uh, an election or a primary when schools are open. So for that reason, we hope that you will consider and approve Tuesday, June thirtieth, as the special election.
Thank you, Mister Markone, uh, Registrar Dezilia.
Not really much to add to that, except, uh, from our budget standpoint, uh, we did have, uh, we currently have a balance of twenty-six thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars in our election and primary account. Uh, with the April twenty-eighth presidential primary with an estimated cost of twenty-four thousand, that leaves us with nineteen hundred. Um, the, this, uh, estimate of the, of this special election will be around six thousand, two hundred dollars, uh, to conduct that special election on June thirtieth. And this does not take into consideration any costs that the town clerk will be incurring as well. And also, if there is a primary, it would be another six thousand dollars on top of that as well. Um, unfortunately, the primary will probably be held, our guess is sometime before the presidential election, maybe a week or two before, depending on the Secretary of State's calendar, which unfortunately does mean schools will be open and will have to provide for, uh, police as we always do when schools are open as well. So. If there's any other questions, I mean, we're, you know how to find us, so.
Any other questions for the council? Miss Dancho.
So this is to, for the zoning board of appeals, a special election of which we had all unanimously appointed Lorenzo Elder at our January meeting. So, why are we doing this?
Based on, based on our charter, uh, the petitions were submitted by, uh, Councilman, um, Councilman Taveras and, and council, and Democratic Party Chairman Stephanie Phillips as a request for a special election to fill that seat. Um, you did, you did fill that seat last month.
We did fill the seat, and Mister Taveras voted for Lorenzo Elder. I believe.
Mister Taveras. Yes, sir.
May I respond? May I respond?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, I did vote for Lorenzo. He wasn't my choice at first, but when I asked him to support Annette Streets, a person with an impeccable record to be chair, and Mary Young, who also has an impeccable record, being that that's what she does for a living, as far as, uh, commissioner land use, I was told that he would support Ms. Streets and Ms. Young. He reneged on that. I served on the Board of Zoning Appeals with honesty and integrity. This person was given a chance and showed not to possess those attributes. I would think that this board and my constituents would want better for a representative. So I felt, yeah, I felt empowered to go ahead and challenge that. I think that, and I'm protecting my constituents, because if a person isn't honest in their opening night, after I even availed on my services to help bring that person along and completely just eschew that.
Okay.
Then that's what I felt.
So can you explain to me the timeline of the voting that took place for the chairperson and the filing of the petition?
Now, petition, the, the filing did go before, because I, before the date that, uh, that Lorenzo.
So you didn't know how the vote was gonna go.
Excuse me?
You didn't know how the vote was gonna go when you originally filed the petition? Correct?
Well, the, I had a, I was told that he was gonna go ahead and, and vote the other way.
So you're saying, okay.
So if the person, if he had done, if he had, um, been honest and did that, that would have been rescinded. That petition would have been rescinded.
So for counselors going forward on this conversation, question, please direct the count, the, the questions through the chair. I'll recognize.
I'm sorry.
No, no. Good. Any other discussion? Mister Harden?
Through the chair. So the, um, paperwork was filed prior to knowing who it was gonna vote for. Uh, I don't want to speak on Mister Lorenzo's character, whether he, uh, reneged or not. But I think when it comes to costing the town additional funds, you know, there are certain aspects that we have to think about. You know, in this political ring, there are some times where we agree with some people and some people make broken promises. Not if that's in this case, but, um, but we have to think about what the, uh, you know, the outlash is. And this is at a cost to the town and its residents. And I don't think that that's fair. You know, I know you're standing on, a person's word is a person's word. We, we all know that. People's, people been like straw sometimes. And I don't think it's a cost that the town should have to pick up because of the way you feel with Mister Elder. And since we already voted as a council, um, you know, I just think it's unfair.
Mister Taveras. Mister Taveras, you may.
I consider the cost to the town an investment. Again, if it, if that is the cost to make sure that a person has a chance to serve on the board without honesty and integrity, I consider that an investment, rather than just letting it go just because of feelings. I did not do this lightly. I reached out and spoke to this person. So there was no emotion or any kind of personal feelings.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Mister Connor.
Um, first of all, I wasn't here last, last month. I was sick and I missed the vote. But I, I thought, when I saw nine zero and I'd heard a lot of things behind the scenes, I thought that this was a good way to start off the, the first session, first real session of the year. Everybody was in agreement. The Republicans had the opportunity to, to primary. We didn't because there was behind the scenes conversation. So it wasn't just one thing that happened. You know, we had kind of a, um, Mister Elder is new to the group. He's new, I know he's been around, but he hasn't been involved. So it's hard to get people involved. And here's this guy, uh, I'm gonna call him a rookie. I have never met him. I don't know him here. I'm actually friends with him on Facebook, but I've never met him. And so I thought it was a good start to, to get into it. But then I started seeing all this, well, before I heard this, I was sitting here in Margot's office, visiting one day, and he was getting sworn in. And his wife showed up with his eight-year-old son, and they were very, like, excited. You know, it was, you know, for, for me, I'm, this is my ninth year. It's hard to get me excited. I'm getting older. Things don't make me that excited. I gotta watch my heart, too. But on a, on a hu, on a serious note, that they were all excited and came down here. And I said, you know, this is, this is democracy at work. This is people wanting to enjoy and, and show themselves. I know Bill O'Brien has a long-time relationship with him, so I've only heard positive about it. So they go down there, and I heard that the son and the daughter, the wife were very happy, got selected. And then I started hearing about a week later, all these things going on behind the scenes. So a lot of folks have talked about, rightfully so, the cost to the town monetarily. But I think there's a cost to bringing somebody in, nurturing them, bring them to the table, bring their family in, and now we're gonna, we're gonna have a battle. And it, I'm, as a Republican, it's a democratic battle. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna support whatever the council does here, you know, and, and I know we're gonna go forward on June thirtieth. But it sounds to me like somebody needs to, to think the humanistic side, because it's hard to get people. You know, and we always talk about adding people and adding people. And I think this guy stepped forward, did the right thing, and, and I, I don't think it's right to do them. I will support the June thirtieth because that's the charter, but I just want to go on record, I don't think it's the right thing. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Connor. Mister Taveras.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Thank you, Mister Councilman Connor. Um, I understand, again, I didn't come to this decision lightly. It took a lot of soul searching. Um, and, uh, I asked that this person support someone that was well-qualified. And in the essence of Black History Month, it would have been really, really great to have somebody come, either come to the council or turn on the channel and see a highly qualified person who just happens to be a woman of color. And also would have been the first woman of color as, as a chair of a very, very, um, influential board. I discussed that with him. So all these things were discussed. So, I, like I said, I didn't get, get to that decision lightly.
So la, last comment, and then we're gonna wrap.
Through the chair one more time. I know where he's, uh, Mister Taveras is speaking of, uh, Lorenzo's, uh, character. Bill and I know Lorenzo, know Lorenzo for a long time. And I have to come to his defense because he's not here. Number one, if Lorenzo told you he would do something, he would do it. Number two, if he was unsure about making the decision, he would tell you, listen, I'm unsure about making the decision because I'm new at this. I knew that there was some bickering going back and forth, and there was a mechanical push to get this, this, uh, petition moving forward. Okay? Whether it was out of spite, whether it was out of somebody's not keeping their word, this is not what we want in this town. And, and I think this was a bad decision. It was a bad decision on the people who orchestrated this, and it was a bad decision across the board.
So I'm, Mister Khan, and then I'm closing.
Before anyone calls the question, I will try to quickly close it. Uh, what, what the Democrats did in Paul's district was not frivolous. It was based on what Lorenzo said and then what he did in contrary to what he said. Why they started the petition before he voted? I don't know. I wasn't part of it. But we've had what I'll, this hurts people's feelings. It should, because we did have a decision, but an event occurred after our decision which validates why those people felt obligated. Uh, the individual who drove it, the few individuals that drove it, who went to Paul and asked for their, his support, um, they'd been burned before by someone who made promises and then reneged on those promises. We've had frivolous elections in the past. There's been primaries run just for the sake of being disruptive, which cost money. Um, everyone deserves a chance to run, and that's why, not on Lorenzo, not on Paul, but the fact that someone wants to run and they are not a member of the council, they weren't here that night, uh, they initiated the petition, they did ask Paul for his support, and I think we should support that individual who does have the right to petition to, uh, for the office.
Mister Chair.
Mister Connor.
Just one last final count. You know what's interesting? I'm listening to both of you. And really what you're talking about is retribution. In the end of the day, you're punishing this guy. You're, you're punishing him. That's what you're doing. You, you took out before, and as soon as he didn't do what you wanted, you punished him. And you're openly admitting it. You're punishing.
No.
Yes, you are.
We're, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be ending this. We're gonna be.
Well, Chris.
Mister Khan. I'm, I'm gonna be.
No retribution against Elder, except for the reason that Paul stated. If an individual wants to run for the office and they drive a petition, it doesn't matter if they're not qualified or not. Why don't we, we're not gonna tell them they can't run for an office, so start a petition. I really regret that we had a good vote. You, you have Mary Young and Annette, Democrats that would have backed up everybody on the ZBA. The ZBA always follows the law. Uh, Lorenzo is probably gonna be a good, he's always been a good volunteer. My family's known him and his wife for twenty-five years. Uh, this is retribution only for the reason that Paul stated, but was, was driving it is individuals behind Paul, not Paul. People who had earlier experiences with not, with people not keeping promises. So they felt this is another case where they needed to find a better candidate, and they're entitled, they are entitled to find a better candidate. Paul didn't. I didn't.
And, thank you, Mister Khan. I'm gonna wrap it up, and that'll be the end of it.
So can you explain to me the timeline of the voting that took place for the chairperson? And the filing of the petition?
Now, petition, the filing did go before, because I, before the date that Lorenzo-
So you didn't know how the vote was gonna go?
Excuse me?
You didn't know how the vote was gonna go when you originally filed the petition? Correct?
Well, the, I had a, I was told that he was gonna go ahead and vote the other way.
So you're saying, okay.
So, if the person, if he had done, if he had been honest into that, that would've been rescinded. That petition would've been rescinded.
So for councilors going forward on this conversation, question, please direct the count, the questions through the chair. I'll recognize.
I'm sorry.
No, no. Good. Any other discussion? Mr. Harden?
Through the chair. So, the paperwork was filed prior to knowing who it was gonna vote for. I don't wanna speak on Mr. Lorenzo's character, whether he reneged or not. But I think, when it comes to costing the town additional funds, you know, there are certain aspects that we have to think about. You know, in this political ring, there are some times where we agree with some people, and some people make broken promises. Not if that's in this case, but, um, but we have to think about what the, you know, the outlash is. And this is at a cost to the town and its residents. And I don't think that that's fair. You know, I know you're standing on, a person's word is a person's word. We all know that. People's, people been like straw sometimes. And I don't think it's a cost that the town should have to pick up because of the way you feel with Mr. Elder. And since we already voted as a council, um, you know, I just think it's unfair.
Mr. Taveras? Mr. Taveras, you may.
I consider the cost to the town an investment. Again, if it, if that is the cost to make sure that a person has a chance to serve on the board without honesty and integrity, I consider that an investment, rather than just letting it go just because of feelings. I did not do this lightly. I reached out and spoke to this person. So, there was no emotion or any kind of personal feelings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Connor?
First of all, I wasn't here last, last month, I was sick and I missed the vote. But I, I thought, when I saw nine zero, and I'd heard a lot of things behind the scenes, I thought that this was a good way to start off the, the first session, first real session of the year. Everybody was in agreement. The Republicans had the opportunity to, to primary. We didn't, because there was behind the scenes conversations. So, it wasn't just one thing that happened. You know, we had kind of a, Mr. Elder is new to the group. He's new, I know he's been around, but he hasn't been involved. So it's hard to get people involved. And here this guy, I'm gonna call him a rookie. I have never met him. I don't know him here. I'm actually friends with him on Facebook, but I've never met him. And so, I thought it was a good start to, to get into it. But then, I started seeing all this, well, before I heard this, I was sitting here in Margot's office, visiting one day, and he was getting sworn in, and his wife showed up with his eight-year-old son, and they were very excited. You know, it was, you know, for, for me, I'm, this is my ninth year, it's hard to get me excited. I'm getting older, things don't make me that excited. I gotta watch my heart, too. But, on a, on a, on a serious note, they, they were all excited and came down here, and I said, you know, this is, this is democracy at work. This is people wanting to enjoy and, and show themselves. I know Bill O'Brien has a long-time relationship with him, so I've only heard positive about it. So, they go down there, and I heard that the son and the daughter, the wife were very happy, got selected. And then I started hearing about a week later, all these things going on behind the scenes. So, a lot of folks have talked about, rightfully so, the cost to the town monetarily. But I think there's a cost to bringing somebody in, nurturing them, bring them to the table, bring their family in, and now we're gonna, we're gonna have a battle. And it, as a Republican, it's a democratic battle. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna support whatever the council does here, you know, and, and I know we're gonna go forward on June 30th. But it sounds to me like somebody needs to, to think the humanistic side, 'cause it's hard to get people. You know, we always talk about adding people and adding people. And I think this guy stepped forward, did the right thing, and, and I, I don't think it's right to do them. I will support the June 30th, because that's the charter, but I just wanna go on record, I don't think it's the right thing. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Mr. Taveras?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Councilman Connor. I understand, again, I didn't come to this decision lightly. It took a lot of soul-searching. And, uh, I asked that this person support someone that was well-qualified. And, in the essence of Black History Month, it would've been really, really great to have somebody come, either come to the council or turn on the channel and see a highly-qualified person who just happens to be a woman of color. And also would've been the first woman of color as, as a chair of a very, very influential board. I discussed that with him. So, all these things were discussed. So, like I said, I didn't get, get to that decision lightly.
So, la-last comment, and then we're gonna wrap.
Through the chair one more time. I know where he's, Mr. Taveras is speaking of Lorenzo's, uh, character. Bill and I know Lorenzo, know Lorenzo for a long time. And I have to come to his defense, because he's not here. Number one, if Lorenzo told you he would do something, he would do it. Number two, if he was unsure about making the decision, he would tell you, listen, I'm unsure about making the decision, because I'm new at this. I knew that there was some bickering going back and forth, and there was a mechanical push to get this, this petition moving forward. Okay? Whether it was out of spite, whether it was out of somebody's not keeping the word, this is not what we want in this town. And, and I think this was a bad decision. It was a bad decision on the people who orchestrated this, and it was a bad decision across the board.
So, I'm, Mr. Ken, and then I'm closing.
Before anyone calls the question, I will try to quickly close it. What, what the Democrats did in Paul's district was not frivolous. It was based on what Lorenzo said, and then what he did in contrary to what he said. Why they started the petition before he voted? I don't know. I wasn't part of it. But we've had what I'll, this hurts people's feelings. It should, because we did have a decision. But an event occurred after our decision, which validates why those people felt obligated. Uh, the individual who drove it, the few individuals that drove it, who went to Paul and asked for their, his support, they've been burned before by someone who made promises and then reneged on those promises. We've had frivolous elections in the past. There's been primaries run just for the sake of being disruptive, which cost money. Everyone deserves a chance to run, and that's why, not on Lorenzo, not on Paul, but the fact that someone wants to run, and they are not a member of the council, they weren't here that night, uh, they initiated the petition, they did ask Paul for his support, and I think we should support that individual who does have the right to petition to, for the office.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Connor?
Just one last final, you know what's interesting? I'm listening to both of you. And really, what you're talking about is retribution. In the end of the day, you're punishing this guy. You're, you're punishing him. That's what you're doing. You, you took out before, and as soon as he didn't do what you wanted, you punished him. And you're openly admitting it. You're punishing, yes, you are.
We're, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be ending this, we're gonna be, is, Mr. Ken? I'm gonna be-
No retribution against Elder, except for the reason that Paul stated. If an individual wants to run for the office, and they drive a petition, it doesn't matter if they're not qualified or not. Why don't we, we're not gonna tell them they can't run for an office, so start a petition. I really regret that we had a good vote. You, you have Mary Young and a net Democrats that would've backed up everybody on the ZBA. The ZBA always follows the law. Lorenzo is probably gonna be a good, he's always been a good volunteer. My family's known him and his wife for 25 years. This is retribution only for the reason that Paul stated. But was, was driving it is individuals behind Paul, not Paul. People who had earlier experiences with not, with people not keeping promises. So they felt, this is another case where they needed to find a better candidate. And they're entitled, they are entitled to find a better candidate. Paul didn't, I didn't.
And, thank you, Mr. Ken. I'm gonna wrap it up, and that'll be the end of it. As I mentioned, in sitting and listening, I do, I do fully support the registrar. First off, Mr. Ken, you're right, and everybody here, I think, feels the exact same way. Everybody has a constitutional right to, to a fair and free election, and I fully endorse that and always will. Okay? I am gonna be agreeing with both registrars' recommendation, as stated to the town council, for the timeline in which the election will take place, and if primaries shall take place. But what I will say as well, is hearing all the points, okay, and being, being the chair, at the end of the day, the petitions were, and, for the record, too, I do not know Mr. Elder, okay, at all. All right? And I went, and to Mr. Connor's point, it is hard for any community or any municipality to get good volunteers, as we're all up here, to come forward and give hard hours to this town. So I will look forward to anybody coming forward, Democrat or Republican or Independent. Okay? But at the end of the day, the petitions were submitted on Monday the third, and the vote was taken for that chair on Tuesday the night, the night after. So, to that point, I'm still gonna be voting to put this election in force, but that's my points, and I'm gonna call it for a vote now. All in favor of accepting the election timeline as proposed by the joint registrar voters, please vote aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Next item on the agenda. Yes, sir.
Apologize, I have one question-
One question for the town attorneys.
For the town attorney, I'd like to address this to Attorney Leclerc, as the parliamentarian. It has to do with the, the motion called to question. I'd like the, I'd like myself and the rest of the council to understand, if someone has the floor, can that motion be used to end the discussion? Bias, can a second person make that motion to interrupt the first person to end their discussion?
So you're talking about someone moving the question, essentially?
Thank you.
Correct?
Yes. Yeah, so that, that's, as you know, is a colloquial name for the motion to limit debate, under Roberts' rules. And the movement for such a motion cannot interrupt a speaker. That said, if a speaker pauses and the chair recognizes a movement, the motion would be appropriate, because the movement did have the floor upon recognition from the chair.
Can you define pause?
There's enough time for someone to stop talking, someone to make a motion be recognized? That's, that's, that's a, that's a decision of the chairman, that's one of the powers a chairman has, he or she has, when they're running a meeting.
When someone, I'm, I'm gonna go back to Senator Chris Murphy, when he was speaking at the Senate half a year ago. And what's the process called, where you just stand on the floor and you keep talking?
Filibuster.
Filibuster. I'm sure he paused many times, but nobody quote, called, called his question, so to speak.
No one, they've been listening to Mr. Murphy at the time, either.
Can I interrupt?
Okay, Greg, you're sore about me calling the question, okay? Let's get over it.
Greg, did he answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item six point one, being ordered, six point two point one, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to-
Ms. Dancho.
Approve the, authorizing the resolution of the Town of Stratford Town Council certification.
Motion by Ms. Dancho. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilor Harden. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Next item on the agenda, six point two point two.
Six point two point two. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of up to fifty-five, fifty-five, a hundred, fifty-five thousand?
Million.
Fifty-five million for the costs- The costs associated with the Town of Stratford general obligation refunding bonds.
Motion by Ms. Dancho, do I have a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Harden. Any discussion? Before there is, since it's a big number, fifty-five million, I would like to have Chris Timniak and Bill Lindsay, please come up and discuss.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having us here. Thank you for taking up this item on the agenda. Last early fall, we started looking at the, the interest rates coming in, and we knew from the previous year that we had a whole bunch of outstanding bonds, that we had an opportunity to refinance. As they started to go down and down and down, we said, we have to take advantage of this. So we enlisted the help of our bond counsel, which is Mike Andretta, and Bill Lindsay, our bond advisor, to help put together this package. He did a great job, I know you received a copy of it, putting all the details in there, you know, even gives a timeline of how the rates drop. And the most important page I like is page number seven, which shows, seven? Yeah, nope. It shows the savings the town, the town anticipates getting on page number seven. So, if I can pass it off to Bill, he'll give you more details on exactly what you have.
All right. Good evening, my name is Bill Lindsay, and I represent the firm of Hilltop Securities. We're based in Madison, Connecticut. So what, what we're here to discuss tonight is an opportunity to refinance up to eighty-four million dollars of prior debt of the town. Included in that number is somewhere between thirty-two and fifty-five million of prior bonds related to the 2013 pension issue. We've, we've split the, the authorization here into two separate resolutions, intentionally. And the reason is that the bonds are authorized under different statutes. So again, we're refinancing, looking to refinance a, a large portion of the thirteen pension bond. And under that statute, we're required to notice the state of our intent to, to do so. And so, for administrative purposes, we carve that out separately into a standalone resolution. So rather than go to the state and say, here's a resolution for a hundred and five million dollars to refinance eight different bond issues, we pulled that one out separately, so it's easier for them to follow. The second resolution for fifty million dollars really covers those other seven bond issues.
Bill, let me ask you a quick question, 'cause I know it might, some people might be thinking of it. Rates are historically an all-time low. This is a great job from the CAO and the administration for bringing this forward, working on it to Mr. Walbert. Now's the time to lock in new rates going forward. Why aren't we refinancing every debt obligation we have?
Great, great question. So, it's, it's important to understand, we're refinancing everything that we can currently, under this, under this authorization. Think about refinancing the town debt, as refinancing mortgage is probably the best example. You can refinance your mortgage at any point in time. It's a little bit different with municipal bonds. When we sell municipal bonds, we have what we call an optional redemption date or a call date. And we can only refinance the bonds when we hit or we're beyond that call date, okay? So we'll refer to that, and this is on page, page one of the, the presentation I prepared. We call it as a, as a current refunding. If we are refinancing the bonds in advance of that call date, we have to establish an escrow account and put monies into the escrow account that pays the interest on those bonds up to that date. Because we have to account for that interest amount up to that stated call date, it can't not always be just on, on the date that we look to refinance, there's, we need to account for that in the economic savings. All right? So here, what we've done is we've, we've looked at all the bonds that are either currently callable, all right, or the bonds that we can refinance prior to their call dates as an advance refunding for economic savings. If rates continue to drop and additional bonds become in the money, so to speak, then we've accounted for that in the, in the authorizing resolution, so we can maximize the savings to the town.
And is there a minimum, I'd say ROI, on the calling of the bonds that makes us pull that trigger? Meaning, do we have to make two percent, three percent, four percent, to make it net-net worth it for us to do the refi?
There is. So, the Governor, Governors Finance Officers of America, GFOA, their best practice is three percent net present value savings, so that's what we're using as our threshold. It's important to understand, the bonds that we've highlighted for you here have an eight percent net present value savings, so we're more than twice the recommended minimum level. So, again, we've, we've accounted for a potential for thirteen million dollars of additional maturities related to the pension bond issue here in the ask. That's why we're looking at a difference between thirty-two million on the pension bond and the fifty-five million in the, in the standalone, the first of the two resolutions. Again, if interest rates continue to fall, and I've got a, a slide here, we can show you where they've gone over the last, over the last eighteen months, we can, we hope to include those, if, if possible, if we meet that minimum threshold.
So this refi alone would save the Town of Stratford and taxpayers over the next eighteen to nineteen years almost seven point six million?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lindsay? Mr. Greg?
Chairman, thank you. To the point Chairman Pia just made, the savings over twenty years, it starts out at the high number, about six hundred thousand dollars for the first year, and then just diminishing over time. So it's, it's, it's a big chunk of savings to take advantage of. I wanted to kind of clarify for myself, the fifty-five and the fifty, so that's a hundred and five million. At the top of the page, this page, sir, where we say the eighty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Then you mentioned possibly an additional thirteen that may be in the money soon. Can you walk us from the hundred and five to the eighty-three?
Sure. So, so you think, think of it in, in these terms. When we're, when we're doing the refinancing, it's not, excuse me, it's not just the face value of the bonds or the par amount of the bonds, depending upon where we all, in relation to that call option, the optional redemption date that I mentioned, we may or may not need to account for the interest in the escrow account. So if you look at the third number on that page, the ninety-five point three million dollars, that's our funding target if we're going to refinance the eighty-three million of, of face value or par. The difference, that twelve million dollars represents the interest that'll need to be included in the escrow account for up to a five-year period to, to redeem those bonds at the stated call dates. So if we're looking at that eighty-three million dollars of prior, I'm sorry, eighty-three million dollars of prior bonds, in order to, in order to hit the, the refunding target at ninety-five million, we're gonna have three funding sources. The, the face value of the bonds we're looking to sell, which we'll call it ninety million, use round numbers, some interest earnings over that, could be up to a five-year period of escrow. And then, the, so what we refer to as bond premium, that the town would receive at settlement, that's really a situation where we've got bond investors who are eager to buy the town's bonds. There's not enough bonds available, we've got a supply and demand imbalance, so they're willing to pay more than a hundred cents on the dollar to purchase the bonds. That counts as, as a third, a third funding source here, in order for us to hit our ninety-five million target. We've only, we've only included those bonds, as the chairman mentioned, where we've hit the minimum savings threshold. There's a potential, two other maturities, six and a half million dollars each for the pension bond, for a total of thirteen, that we could bring in if interest rates continue to fall. That would bring the total issuance from the ninety million up to a hundred and five.
Two questions. So, the, this hundred and five incorporates, we're, we're, we're preparing for possibly doing that other six million plus six million? So we're positioned to do that. If we did do that, how much bond premium would we recognize as?
It, it, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars of, of premium. We're seeing bond prices that are somewhere on average around nine percent, right? Between eight and nine percent of, of the par amount. And so I would expect you'd be additional premium there. It's important to understand, though, with, with the premium that we're talking about, as it relates to these refunding bonds, we're, we're, we're including those premium as a funding source within the transaction. So that money would not be coming directly to the town, right? We're using that money to help reduce the, the amount of bonds we need to issue to hit our funding target. And as we issue fewer bonds, the savings goes up.
Thank you for coming here tonight and giving us this write-up and explaining the background.
My pleasure.
Any other questions for Ms. Lindsay? Oh, I think that was a very excellent, detailed explanation, sir, and we do appreciate, we all like saving some money, so, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll call this, so we're gonna be voting just for clarity on six point two point two. I will call that to a vote now. All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Next item on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on six point two point three, I motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of up to fifty million dollars for the costs associated with the Town of Stratford general obligation refunding bonds.
Motion on the table, Ms. Dancho, do I have a second to that? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien, any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Next item on the agenda? Six point two point four.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move to approve six point two point four, resolution regarding nutrition, education, and obesity prevention.
Motion by Mr. O'Brien, do I have a second to that? Seconded by Councilor Harden, any discussion? As we all know, our health department continues to bring us great grants, so, thank you. If you'd like to come up and just give us a brief, sure, you, you put hard work into this, so.
This is a, Andrea Boyce, Director of Health, is it? Oh, yeah. I'm too short, that's, this is a worksite wellness, it's a, it's a two-year grant, where we'll be working with our partners in, in Trumbull, Monroe, Bridgeport, and Fairfield, to bring worksite wellness and breastfeeding awareness, so, to address nutrition, education, and obesity.
Keep bringing us the grants, Andrea, it works, we, we appreciate it. You're doing a great job. Any questions for Andrea? Oh, here, thank you, as always. Okay, with that, we'll call to a vote. All in favor? Chair, Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Next item on the agenda, six point two point five.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move to approve a resolution, uh, six point two point five, a resolution regarding asthma program.
Motion by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Councilwoman Dancho, any discussion?
This is a renewal of a self-management-in-home care program that we've had, where we do asthma, visits with families over, for the whole, the whole region, so it's not just Stratford, but we do other towns. This is a five-year grant, so that two hundred fifty-eight thousand is divided by five. And, uh, it's a, it's really, I think, a great, great way to, to promote health and, you know, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Andrea on this? Mr. Ken?
Thank you, Chairman. Andrea, we're, we're doing a great service for the region, administering it for the neighboring towns. On this and the earlier that we voted for, our resources on behalf of the other towns, do we cover our costs, if you will, in addition to providing the services?
Yes, so for the nutrition education program, part of that grant will be serving as a fiduciary, and we will be providing those towns about, I think it's five thousand dollars each, to do the work that, you know, we're gonna kind of help coordinate. And then for the asthma program, we actually have memorandums of understanding with other health departments, so their sanitarians will go and do the work as part of that. But yeah, we do. Thanks for asking.
Thank you, Andrea. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call this to a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, item seven point one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion, resolve that the Stratford Town Council authorize the Board of Education apply for Commissioner of Education and accept a, a grant for asbestos abatement and new flooring projects in the amount of two point three million dollars.
Motion by Mr. O-, Mr. Connor. Do I have a second to the motion? Seconded by Ms. Dancho. Any discussion? If I can ask CAO Chris Timniak and Brian Schneider to come forward? Chris, if you could just walk us through this item?
Well, not real quick, however long it takes. Say, last October, Brian, myself, and a couple others did a tour of Benel High School. We looked at some, some flooring, which was actually very troubling to see. We'd received several complaints about it, and it sort of rose to the level of, hey, this is an emergency which we need to really focus on. So at that point, we engaged Brian to go ahead and put together a cost estimate, and we want to include it in this year's CIP. It's gotta get done, and same with the other three projects we have. The idea of getting it right now, while you're seeing it now, and not waiting for the blue book is because Brian's gotta have a mechanism to file with the state of Connecticut to receive the reimbursement for these projects. You know, we're doing, we're gonna try to do four projects tonight, so that we can get the maximum amount. And the fear is always that the state's gonna lower the reimbursement cost, you know, one day. Right now, we're at a very high rate compared to other towns, and it's something where if we can start the paperwork on it, you know, we can queue it up and try to get them done this summer. If not, we already have a, an amazing head start to get it done next year. But the priority right now is definitely, definitely getting the Benel flooring done and a plan in place. Brian can walk through the details of ordering the flooring and how we scoped it out, if you're interested. if you're interested in hearing that.
So Brian, if you can just give us a brief overview in what the reimbursement rate is as of now?
I'm sorry?
What the reimbursement rate is, is as of now, and why we want to get this in?
Uh, the last time I checked, it was around sixty. I don't know what it is. That was probably a year ago. But yes, it's substantial.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
Just, how automatic is that reimbursement? Is it project by project, or?
Uh, it's project by project, and fortunately and unfortunately, there's asbestos underneath the existing carpet. So you get kicked into the category of qualifying for grant reimbursement money. Which is a good thing.
Any other questions on this item? And again, the logic, excuse me, I should say, the statement of, of applying for these is, is applicable to the next, to the next three items as well in terms of getting on the list for reimbursement, correct?
Correct. Those resolutions are boilerplate resolutions that the state requires to even receive an application.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote on, on this item, which is seven point one. All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Next item on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a-
Connor.
Make a motion, resolve that the Stratford Council authorize the Board of Education apply to the Commissioner of Education and accept or reject a grant for roof replacement at Worcester Middle School in the amount of two point six million dollars.
Do I have a second to that motion? Seconded by Counselor Perillo. Any discussion? Nope, hearing none. I'll call it for a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, resolve that the Stratford Town Council authorize the Board of Education apply to the Commissioner of Education accept or reject a grant for roof replacement in the amount of two point one million dollars.
Motion's on the table. Motion has been made by Mr. Connor. Do I have a second to that? Seconded by Dave Harden. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye, ten zero.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, resolve that Stratford Town Council authorize the Board of Education apply to the Commissioner of Education accept or reject, reject the grant for roof replacement at Second Hill Lane Elementary School in the amount of two point two million dollars.
Motion by Mr. Connor. Do I hear a second to that motion? Seconded by Counselor Madancho. Any discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a quick question. Was there a dollar figure associated with the Benell flooring?
Yeah, two point three.
Mr. Connor read it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just missed it. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. No problem. Next item on the agenda is seven point two point one. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, resolve that Susan Johnson of Style Street B and is hereby reappointed as a member of the Stratford Library Association Board, Association Board with a term that expires December, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. Connor. Do I have a second? Seconded by David Harden. Any discussion on item seven point two point one A? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, resolve that Beth DePonte of Broad Street B and is hereby reappointed a member of the Stratford Library Association Board with a term that expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. Connor, seconded by David Harden. Any conversation on point B? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, ten zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, resolve that Sean Heybert of Matthew Drive B and is hereby reappointed a member of the Stratford Library Association Board with a term that expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. Connor, seconded by David Harden. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye, ten zero. Next item on the agenda, seven point two point two.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move that Richard Brown of Main Street B and is hereby reappointed a member of the Board of Assessment Appeals with a term that expires January first, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion by Mr. O'Brien. Do I have a second to that? Seconded by Counselor Harden. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, ten zero.
Also, I move that Michael Henrick of Brookbend Drive B and is hereby appointed a member of the Board of Assessment Appeals to the expired term of Kenneth Jackson with a term that expires January first, twenty twenty-four.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Madancho. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Next item on the agenda, two, seven point two point three.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I move that we approve Anthony Swanson of Selby's Pond Road B and here, is hereby appointed an alternate member of the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission to the vacant term expiring May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Motion by Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second to Ms. Dancho's motion? Seconded by Counselor O'Brien. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. Seven point two point four, Mr. Perillo.
I'd like to make a motion, resolve that Ron Ticky of Homestead Avenue be an ultimate member of the zoning board of appeals, expiring January first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion by Mr. Perillo. Do I have a second to that motion? Seconded by David Harden. Any, any discussion on the item? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye, ten zero. Item seven point two point five.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to resolve that Chansey Post Marcone of Luan Road B and is hereby reappointed a member of the Disability Review Board with a term that expires January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. Connor. Do I have a second? Seconded by David Harden. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, ten zero. Next item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to resolve that Frank Shifo, M.D. of Main Street B and is hereby reappointed a member of the Disability Review Board with a term that expires January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. Connor. Any, do I have a second to the item? Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on it? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, ten zero. Next item on the agenda, it would be confirmation of mayoral appointments, seven point three point one. I believe I can read these into the record, Town Attorney? Okay, so, seven point three point one, item A, be it resolved that the mayor's appointment of Greg Gross to the Conservation Commission be and is hereby confirmed. Item B, seven point three point one B, be it resolved that the mayor's appointment of Cassandra Bryant to the Conservation Commission be and is hereby confirmed. Item seven point three point two, the Historic District Commission, be it resolved that the mayor's appointment of Ron Ticky to the Historic District Commission be and is hereby approved?
You still need a second to-
I'm sorry?
You'll need a second and still to vote on it, though.
You still have to vote on those resolutions, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Boyssan, Mr. Boyssan. And we, we still, oh, that's right, because you read them in. Okay, so we have to add it to the agenda. We have to add those three names to the agenda, because of Mayor, those two, okay? Okay, so let's vote on the three names that we just read off. There was a second by Mr. Boyssan. Let me read those items. We'll, any discussion on those three names? These are the names that the mayor opened up her, in mayor's report with. Okay, call for a vote on those three. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, ten zero. So I will ask, the mayor had mentioned two other names as appointments in her report, which she has the, the right to do. So the other names would be Tony Smith added to the Historic District and Jennifer Sheldon to the Economic Development Commission. Seconded by Mr. Boyssan. Any discussion on those items? Nope, hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero.
That was your vote, that was a motion to add them to the agenda?
That was a motion to add them to the agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the resolutions.
Motion to approve those resolutions.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Boyssan. Any discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion passes ten zero. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Mr. O'Brien, and seconded by Mr. Perillo. All in favor? Thank you.